Ladies and gentlemen, we recall the today's time to be the United Center for Communications, which is to be led by member Ryan Semien.
Please bow your heads and pray with me. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here today. Thank you for your many abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health, for the ability to think and make decisions on our own, and for friendship. Give us the wisdom, wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues we are facing. Give us a sense of welfare and true needs of our people. Give us confidence in what is good and fitting. Give us the ability to work together in harmony, even where there's honest disagreement. Give us personal peace in our lives and join us in our task. Let us pray for the agenda set before us today, and please give us assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work and around our beloved city of Alliance. It is in your most blessed name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Blessed be the name of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Here.
Edwards, here.
Here.
James.
Here.
King.
Here.
Roldan.
Here.
Semien.
Here.
You all.
Thank you. Did everybody get a copy of the April 16th regular council meeting minutes? If you have any concerns, suggestions, questions? Hearing none, we will file those minutes. Communications.
I have the items listed in the order of business with the addition of the memorandum from the mayor's office indicating receipts collected in April of 2018. Those receipts include $805,527.18 in the sewer department, $5,905 in the cemetery department, $12,134.99 in the building department, $3,697.41 in the engineering department, and $42,650 in the mayor's office for a grand total collected of $869,914.59. And I also have the addition of the state health department, 2017, to give you word for it. But those two additions, that's all I have.
Mr. President.
Mr. James.
I move to receive, approve, and file all of the communications listed in the order of business for tonight with the addition of the memorandum of receipts from the mayor's office.
We move and seconded to approve, receive, and file all the communications listed, including the additions. Any further comment? Hearing none, always a favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion is carried. Administrative reports. Mary Darian.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Two items tonight for council. First, I want to congratulate and thank President Harry Pades of the Park Board. He's done a wonderful job of leading the park levy campaign. We wish him well tomorrow. We want to thank all the members of that committee that have worked diligently over the past few months to try and bring that to fruition, and of course, we encourage everyone to go out and vote tomorrow. Second item, I am requesting that under whole business, that there be a vote on the financial recovery plan. That concludes my report, Mr. President.
Safety Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items. One, if you remember, you passed an ordinance about two months ago for service line insurance when we were partnering with the company to put on insurance for water and sewer lines that met what our customers have for obligations. One of those letters going out to residents of that plan is now available. The first letter goes out the 14th, W.1, and followed up on the 28th this month. Speaking of letters, there was a lot of people that were responsible to deal with the electric aggregation changes. We have a couple areas that Mr. Edwards may care about just more because of July 4th, where he's nodding like he already knows. Washington Hills was originally the town. So residents there, some of them were automatically into an aggregation program less than Washington years ago. And so when they came out, they got hit with an early exit fee. And then of course, they called us about that. The good news is that NOPEX is all they need to do is let NOPEX know they refund that exit fee. So if you do get a call like that, they can either call our office and we'll get in touch or they can get a NOPEX directive, and that will get taken care of. Most of you, but not all of you, got a notice from Health Commissioner that the rabies mating will go on again this year. That goes on through the 19th and 24th. And it is similar to what has happened twice in the last two years. Finally, April was the first month for ODI and the billions for motor vehicle accidents. We have 20 motor vehicle accidents. That means that we will bill $800. With their cost structure, it also means that they have set up bills totaling $7,540. That's the numbers from the first month for that.
Mr. Zoll.
Just a point of clarification regarding NOPEX. If they were to call the 8-5-5 number, which has been very good based upon reviews, that's not going to get them anywhere. They need to either send me a photocopy of the letter they received or stop by City Hall so that I can have a copy of the letter and send it directly to the director of NOPEX. And he said, I met with him on Friday, and he said, whoever has a problem there will send them a check for $25. But the 800 number's not going to do it. It needs to come directly to me, evidence of it, just the letter they received. So thank you.
Mr. Semien.
On Mr. George, do you have a letter for the insurance, is that going to be the water bill?
No, it's a separate mailing. This mailing is done by that company. It will carry us. I don't think that's too low or anything. The safety, by my example, indicate that we are supportive of the program. We have some training going on also that residents call and are concerned about. They'll have no idea they don't have to go into this program, and they don't have to utilize this company if they need to.
I think there's somebody might have gotten wind of that because I got a letter from another company wanting to know if I wanted to apply their terms to the water lines.
Any other questions? Safety Service Director? Thank you. Butter and Oles.
And Mr. President?
Well, I went out of order, didn't I?
Sorry.
I'm okay with that.
Go ahead of the class.
Two items tonight. First is the ordinance 3418, which is a budget adjustments that's been on the bag. These are just mine here. First one's for CEG Housing Rehab Loan Funds. These are the money that the loan department asked to be appropriated to process for rehab loans for the community. Last two are insurance proceeds which we see this year. And the first one's from the Parks Department for the rest of the shelter. In January, we received around $20,000. I didn't know that was going to be it. But this is an additional amount of insurance that we're expecting received. So we need to process that so that they can continue the repairs, gain the revenue out there. The last one is for the police department. This is for vehicles. This is from cruiser that were attacked by us and then by the ones that were hit by the park cruisers. That's the total amount that we received so far for this, as a process on repairs for that. I don't know if there's still more coming in on that. There could be more money coming in from insurance proceeds from that back. Just so we can catch it later time. My last thing is just the tax recap, which kind of consistent with this year, still behind the lip of last year's pace. But the last several months, we have actually made up some ground from getting raised over that. As far as April numbers, we'll have them tomorrow. Somehow, everybody can probably suggest at this month, maybe before the next council meeting, I'll get together and just have the recap number to see how it's trending in terms of our expenses and insurance. That's all I have.
Any questions, Olivia? Madam Lawler.
Thank you, sir. Our report tonight is similar to last, no, not last week, three weeks ago, I guess. We've got a full weekend there. I'm requesting that you call in executive session to discuss pending or imminent. I have the quote section here. I'm not necessarily requesting that you do it during my report as you did last time, but I do want to give you this caveat. My sons are at this very minute going through their Eagle Scout order review. And so I'd like to be there whenever awarded their scouts at like 8:10. So if they could make sure I get out of here so I can see that it's been a long six years coming, and they're both getting it tonight, not comfortable in it. So not necessarily this minute because I know it's a real inconvenience to the people who have to leave and relax, and since they only have one order, so they may only do it at the end. But I just wanted to give you that caveat, and I wanted to give you enough time to ask me the questions you wish to ask.
Yeah. Anybody who wants to make a motion right now to go to executive session at the end, as requested by the lawler?
Hold it and do it. That's what we can't do, that.
Well, no, no, no. Well, somebody has to make a motion. Somebody has to make a motion to it. I'm not making a motion. I'm just.
I can't make a motion.
Right. Now, I'm opening up the door to somebody to make the proper motion.
I will make the motion that we do in the executive session at the end for comprehensive attorney for the public body concerning disputes involving the public body. There is subject of pending or imminent court action, including council members, the mayor, city service director, law director, clerk, and the aldermen.
Is there a second for that motion? Okay, it's been moved and seconded, and we go into executive session. And the motion was literally read from the statute. So we believe it to be a correct motion. Can you please follow the law?
Chair.
Yes.
Gordon.
Yes.
Edwards.
Yes.
Jack James.
No.
King.
No.
Roldan. Semien.
Yes.
Five to two.
Thank you, sir.
And that motion was to go into executive session at the conclusion of the regular meeting with no business to follow, correct?
Yes.
Well, can you give me a reading?
Okay. Properties Atlantis. Ms. Chair.
I have nothing to say, but I did want to tell everybody that it's all maintained. I'm so glad to see the stores open. I know that a lot of the residents, especially in the first and second floor, are still pleased that we do have a grocery store now and they face the and the people who are well received. I went through and I saw actual smell and people today are just grateful that the store is there. And I talked to Mark Sanders, and I told him whatever I had to do for the rest of the Alliance, not just the first and second floor, but to maintain that store because that's our story and take pride in it and do what we got to do to make sure that they are well from here. And I want them to second. And second of all, I went to Alhambin last week. There was the fair housing seminar. The district personnel that came up and she gave us a reminder about the new laws to their housing and the different things we need to do as far as housing rights in the city of Alliance. And personally, I have two constituents that called me with problems with some of our landlords here in Alliance, meaning that they're accepting rent. And the rent is high, and the houses are actually dilapidated. That's standard. And I asked one of the landlords that they would love to live in that same house to do what they feel comfortable living there. One young lady had Mike in the house. She gave her some tracts after there the next week. Well, if you don't like this, you can move. Evidently, I think this landlord does not know the fair housing law. So it's going to be my business this week, the letters were now to address from the landlords here in Alliance because back in '77, '85, I was the fair housing coordinator here for city of Alliance under contract, which is canceled. And somehow, over the years, there's a lot of landlords, and I'm not pinpointing all landlords or all renters, but there's several in city of Alliance that need to come up and understand the fair housing law. And I'm going to see what they do the next month. Just so that people need to be treated fairly, can live where they want to, in peace and in deep. That's all that happens here.
Thank you. Safety Judice here. It gave my attention, by the way, that we are soon going to be celebrating 125th anniversary of Alliance Fire Department. Not yet. We'll, we'll talk about that later. But wouldn't it be amazing to know how much property they saved, how many lives they saved, how much good they've done to the community over that time? And also, before we meet again, a National Police Memorial Week will take place. Back in 1962, President Kennedy determined that May 15th would be honored annually as a day to remember your law enforcement. And wouldn't it be great if you could know, you know, what they've saved over the years, the people they've saved, and the bad guys they've put away? And I guess my message tonight is be thankful for what you have. A lot of other communities would give their, well, they would give a tremendous amount to be able to, most of the type of safety forces have the quality of service that we get from those individuals. So I want to tell you both, thank you. And if Chief Griffith, is there an Alliance ceremony going to be taking place?
Yes, sir, by day on the square.
Are we from today?
Yes.
On the square?
Yes.
At noon?
Yes.
Very good. So I could tell you, those are always amazing ceremonies. Very somber. And certainly worth your time, if you have it, to go spend an hour, maybe a little longer, on the square next Monday at noon. And with that, I'm done. Thank you very much. Utilities.
No formal report tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Finance.
No formal report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Community development. Thank you. Streets and alleys. Thank you. Planning, zoning, and housing.
No reports.
Thank you. Madam Law Director, it sounds like you're going to get your wish. Public speaks.
We have one. Walter Wokes.
Sir, please, wait him up. If you'd like to come on up, you can come up. Just going to need you to give us your name and your address, and then you have three minutes to advise us whatever you came to tell us.
Yes, Pastor Walter. This is on 601 Harvard, Northwest Canton, Ohio. Former resident of Alliance. I am the community disaster relief violence project director. Prosecutor General Ferrero in the office. Been doing that one on five years this November. In December, I talked with the Canton Police Department and also their commissioner, Mr. Ferrero, to research Crime Stoppers. Canton PD was a yes on that. And we've already started a project in Canton where we're doing some things now to get information on seven homicides that we had in 2017. And so we're pursuing those seven cases. But out of our research, we realized that Stark County is one of the largest counties in the state of Ohio that does not have a Crime Stoppers. And so have been given permission to start a Crime Stoppers. And we've been meeting, and we'll have a formal meeting to start a board. It would be a nonprofit on the 24th of this month at 9:00 a.m. in the morning at Stark Metropolitan Housing Authority's headquarters. And we wanted to share this with Alliance. It was in the Canton repository yesterday. And we're looking, it's this Stark County project, not just city of Canton. And if there's any individuals who would be interested in becoming a part of the board, all you got to do is contact me. And our number's 330-309-2900. 330-309-2900. And so we want to get this for all of Stark County. And even as our street, my coworkers over at the Madison City Council speaking tonight, and we've already spoken with Canton City Council. And so we wanted to afford that to Alliance also, since again, this is a county-wide project. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions for Pastor? Hearing none, we'll move on to council member roundtable discussion. As you all know, it's an opportunity for you to discuss pretty much whatever you have on your mind in your heart. You've got about 10 minutes of uninterrupted time if you want, although we picked the lawler to the hope that we don't exercise all of that collectively. So Member Chair, you're up.
I'm sorry, my time is running out. Oh, you have to do that. I have nothing to say. Like, all that children's dead, all that left, they too much of it. Other than each and every citizen in Alliance who is a registered voter, I urge you, I encourage you to get out of the vote. We've got nothing choice, just love to vote. That's always been my motto, and I encourage your wife to get out of the homeboy and vote out. Thank you.
My turn. I would like to act though what the mayor said earlier about Harry Pades and the Park Board, and all the volunteers, and everybody that's been there. The signed campaign is excellent. I thought the articles, the ads, and the newspapers were excellent. It's a great message. I hope it's well received. I'm encouraging everybody to go vote for the park levy. If you haven't gone already, of course, it's tomorrow. And the city of Alliance, not just the parks, but every area of the city of Alliance, needs that to pass. So please, you vote and encourage somebody else to vote. Thank you. Mr. Douglas.
I also want to recommend Mr. Pades is committing, and strongly recommend he committed to the State Department of Parks, want to report on. Just quickly on that, on the resolutions hanging around forever, 29-18. You kind of beat it to death already, but I just want to repeat that when I reviewed the fiscal report, recovery report, there are also some items, I should say, that are completely agreed upon yet in tier two. And I don't think we want to get into tier two because there's some things in that that will not be pleasant for the council or the citizens of Alliance. But as far as the task goes, we went back and forth on that, but I just want to reiterate that I've been told by the administration that whatever happens with the fire department, that that would be no loss of service. We would still have the same service that we have right now, whatever happens with that. If it's not, you don't vote for it. And so I just kind of talked about, as far as, if we had to get into the tier two also, what I'm looking at, there's some areas in that as far as the, I'm not sure if the state would want us to go there, but some things that we might have to look at that would not be pleasant as far as fees, taxes, costs that could be incurred by the citizens that would not be pleasant at all. And we do have to remember that this is just part of, we need to pass that levy, and we also need to do something to help our finances out too. And this is just part of it because what the state would, they also want to carry over budget that is as much as what we're in the hole. So I think we just need capable services, and that's all I have.
Member Jeff Meads.
Well, I'm not going to repeat all of my previous comments. I think my colleagues all know how I feel about this plan. But kind of in the spirit of the comments that the previous have made already about the park levy, I mean, not so much as chair, but in the importance of voting. As I've gone to a couple of the park levy meetings that that city, I've seen an absolutely incredible group of people, most of whom are not political at all, who I've never seen work on a campaign before, all in together to do anything and everything that somebody brought up as a potential way to sway votes and encourage people to vote. I have heard a thousand different reasons why we need our parks and why the park levy is a great idea, and why it's not just a way for the person to permit and roll the parks, play the city, but the city is a hole, and how we may be able to spend the money that's freed up that won't be spent on the parks if the levy passes. And, you know, it reminds me, or should remind me, I guess, of city council and how we work together. But unfortunately, as evidenced by the recovery plan, we don't work together that well. Recovery plan is the mayor's plan that was supposed to be ratified by council, but we're all supposed to separate change within it. We're all supposed to be on the same footing about what our plan is to get out of this precaution, what steps we're taking, what it's going to look like. And I cannot honestly tell the voters, or anybody for that matter, that I know exactly what the plan is because it's been crowded and busy, and we don't know what will happen in negotiations. We can't reveal what can happen in negotiations. And I just reiterate my previous comments that I'm not going to vote for something that I cannot vote for because people are voting for me. However, I will certainly be voting for the park levy tomorrow, and I hope that we can all take a lesson when it passes by due time. So we shall be working together, let those people work together for the city.
Thank you. Number King. Number R.
This falls for, like, Mr. Pades and the others, but I'd like to appreciate what you do, appreciate what you give to the city so badly.
Number Semien.
Yes, I just wanted to thank Stephanie, your daily in the Alliance FOP, for putting on the second annual Main Street Live Saturday. Also the sponsors. Not only was I able to be there, I also took part in it with my sock organization. But it's a great event, and it's nice to see downtown, something that's not on State Street or downtown again. So I break my memories from when I was a kid, you don't see all those people there, but it was a great event in Minnesota.
Thank you. I guess we have no third reading?
No third reading.
No second reading.
We have a second reading. So we have new business.
Which takes us to ordinance 3418, introduced by Lieutenant William Jack James. That's an ordinance making appropriations.
That's an ordinance making appropriations and transfers of funds in the 2018 appropriations to provide the necessary expenses and adjustments and declaring amendments.
Mr. President.
Mr. (inaudible).
Suspend the rule requiring that appropriations ordinance 3418 be referred to the Finance Committee and include a discussion.
Hearing none, all those that favor (inaudible) saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rule requiring three readings upon ordinance 34-18.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we suspend the rule requiring three readings upon ordinance 34-18. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those that favor (inaudible) saying aye? Aye. Opposed? No. Mr. (inaudible).
Chair.
Yes.
Gordon.
No.
Edwards.
Yes.
Jack (inaudible).
No.
King.
No.
Rome.
Yes.
Sidney.
No.
Order three.
(inaudible) the adoption of 29-18.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance (inaudible) resolution 29-18, which, as we all know, is the mayor's fiscal recovery plan in accordance with section 118.025A of the (inaudible). Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those that favor (inaudible) saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried.
And it's all the new business we have.
We have one item on old business?
President.
Mr. Rome.
I move for adoption of 29-18.
(inaudible).
Mr. President, I move to break out ordinance 29-18. (inaudible) to part of new business. (inaudible).
It's been moved by Member Rome to bring resolution 29-18 from old business back to new business.
Second.
And it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those that favor (inaudible) saying aye? Aye. Opposed? No. Mr. (inaudible).
Chair.
Yes.
Gordon.
No.
Edwards.
Yes.
Jack (inaudible).
No.
King.
No.
Rome.
Yes.
Sidney.
No.
Order three.
(inaudible) the adoption of 29-18.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance (inaudible) resolution 29-18, which, as we all know, is the mayor's fiscal recovery plan in accordance with section 118.025A of the (inaudible). Any further discussion?
And I just want to say again, that as far as the fire department, this is something for operations that will try to be implemented to help us with these (inaudible).
And I would respond to that with, you know, what we get to vote on is not managerial rights. Managerial right has a lot of rights to do a lot of things. What we get to vote on is a contract. And I, I mean, if this, if this thing goes through a contract without us knowing about it, I just, I don't want our safety forces to think that we just (inaudible), whatever. That's all, so.
I'm not saying that either. If it comes with a contract, if you like the contract, then go vote for it. Right?
But that's, I understand what you're saying. Member Jack (inaudible).
I would just like to point out explicitly that if this passes and the administration takes their approach, we will have no control over what it costs to get to that point where we vote. How much money will we spend in what we all know is going to be contentious negotiations in order to get something that we can turn something down? But that's the other side of it.
Well, I don't think we have to worry a whole lot about the morale going south because the morale (inaudible) organization isn't very high right now, so. But I do think we need to be aware of that, and like I said, they're about to celebrate 125 years of service in the alliance. 125 years of service. And we're going to vote on something that (inaudible). I'll stand back. Member Chair.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you. The (inaudible) is none, and the situation that is our financial situation right now, that we're not out after any (inaudible) service (inaudible). Not out after any (inaudible). Overall, as you know, finance, (inaudible) we must do, we all heard the same thing from the state, we have to do something, do it now. Hopefully, the Park Board (inaudible) goes through. We have to look at every entity that we have, try to keep the city together, keep the fire department with all their employees still working, keep the police department with whatever they got now still working, keep the trash done every week. If we don't do something right now in this entity, we don't (inaudible), like I said, you don't, you don't (inaudible), you don't want to go on something that (inaudible). But the (inaudible) is in all of our faces, so we know that's coming if we don't do something. I'd rather try to do something, try to save our city than sit back and say and bicker every week about, I want to know everything. Transparency, if they go down, we all blame them. They are accountable as a administration, and we have to check them. And I do believe, even though y'all may not believe it, transparency is there in (inaudible) because we as council, we have that right, but we got to do something.
Anybody else? Mr. (inaudible) call Rome.
Chair.
Yes.
Gordon.
No.
Edwards.
Yes.
Jack (inaudible).
No.
King.
No.
Rome.
Yes.
Sidney.
No.
Do we need a motion to adjourn to the executive session?
No, we just can't go into the (inaudible).
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to be going into executive session as we voted earlier. Thank you very much for coming in tonight. Don't forget to go vote. We don't anticipate doing any business afterwards. Enjoy the rest of the evening, gentlemen. (Inaudible).